Yeah, so let's go ahead and get started. We'll call the meeting to order. It's 6:35 on Wednesday, April 16th. And our first order of business is public comment. We don't have anybody in the room, but maybe we have any... No, we don't have anybody on Zoom. So we will keep right on rolling. The next order of business is the consent agenda, which is just very simple, ordinary, sometimes really exciting, but doesn't need much discussion. It's business of the board. So we just put it all together into one item on the agenda and vote on it all at once. So is there anyone who would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Thanks, Jim. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Jill. Is there any discussion?
I just want to say this is one of the most exciting... No, I'm not even joking. Consent agendas, though. There's a lot of good news in there.
There is a lot of good news in there.
I'm just...I can't see both at the same time. So I'm just looking at what all the good news is.
Well, we would like to congratulate Rachel Lynn on her new position as principal of Union Elementary. And we have a contract with our teachers for next year, which we're very excited about.
They have yet to ratify it.
Which they have yet to ratify, but we are excited about, yeah, the support. And of course, the superintendent's report, which I mistakenly called mundane last meeting and did not intend to do so. Okay, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so then do we have a presentation, Amani, from students?
Scott and I were just going to talk about the new student representatives that we're trying to find for this upcoming year. Miriam could make it today, so she sent a tracking for that now.
I'm not ready here.
Yeah, so, yeah, we just wanted to, like, put it out there. I think Anna followed up with an email today, so that has been more broadly advertised. I think one person I know was going to send an email today. I don't know if that happened yet, but there's one person in I T A who I've been talking to. They applied last time when I avoided.
Yeah, I think, what, Miriam sent an email. I don't know who...it went broadly out to...
MHS students, I think, yeah.
MHS students, the end of March. And then I know Matt McLean has been doing some one-on-one engagement with students to try to drum up support. Anna, and then I think Jason maybe also sent a message. So the news is out, so we're just trying to replace the irreplaceable.
It's going to be a hard task. Can you remind us what the deadline is for their letters of interest?
In year, it's the 18th of April, which...
Okay, well, that's Friday. It's Friday, which can be still, still in the future.
Yeah, so we'll see if we get two letters of interest by then.
And then the intent was to have them join the May 7 meeting.
Okay.
And so I think we have a little bit of wiggle room on that deadline, but with April break, it gets a little tight.
Yeah, no, we could...well, and we probably could have them come to the meeting on the 21st instead, instead of the 7th, if we needed to push the deadline.
Yeah. We could.
We got, like you said, some...
We got some buffer.
All right.
So get the news out.
Okay, well, then let's move into board discussion. Looks like we have financials first before talking about the pending legislation. So who's kicking off the financials? All right, Tim, take it away.
We just heard from...so we'll start with the 2425 financial audit. We just got a presentation in our operations committee meeting from Christina. It was a clean audit where there were no findings, which was great.
Bless you.
She did note that there was a fund balance decrease of $3,000. It had to do with the timing of an invoice that was booked. It was a July-June invoice that got paid but accrued a month earlier. So the adjustment was made, but it's nothing substantial. Christina did point out to us, if you're looking, if you're interested in the amount of federal funds we receive, on page 41 of the audit, it shows that we received about $2.5 million of federal funds relevant in this day and age to keep in mind, but nothing of note for audit purposes. And at the end, it always looks at whether or not there are any material weaknesses or other things like that, and there are none. So unsurprising, a clean, strong audit. And the operations committee, I think, would recommend that the board approve the audit as presented. And happy to muddle through any questions and maybe look to Libby for help if anyone has them.
And so we'll do those separately, right? The financial audit and the quarter three report?
However you want to do it.
Yeah, we'll do that. And so are you making a motion?
I would move approval of the...or acceptance or...
You don't approve it, yeah, you just accept it.
We accept it. Yeah, I would move acceptance of the 2425 financial audit.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Great. Any discussion or questions for the committee or Libby? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then the third quarter report?
Third quarter report. Christina also just presented this in our operations committee. She highlighted a few items that the board might want to look at. One of them, on the revenue side, was our rental revenue. We budgeted $10,000 for rental revenue. That's renting the facility out for different events. I think the practice these days is to generally not charge, particularly for things that are going to be beneficial to our student population. So we're not receiving the amount of revenue. We budgeted, with a budgeted amount of $10,000, that's not a huge thing. But it was something that she noted. State aid for transportation, that's running pretty high, and it's unclear why. If you look at the revenue side of the financials that were presented, we budgeted $112,000, and our actuals to date are 206. So that is a substantial surplus. I think it's consistent with what neighboring school districts are seeing, so while I guess we're not 100% sure why, it's not something that I think anyone's going to oppose. So what else do we have? After-school revenues are coming in low. This is as expected and as we addressed in our previous, in our upcoming budget year, where we lowered the amount that we're expecting. And we have some additional revenues coming in. It's in miscellaneous other revenues. It has to do with an E-rate reimbursement, which, if you want any more than the name, I'm going to look to Libby on that.
Technology infrastructure is a federal piece that comes that we can get rebased on.
That's on the revenue side. Those were the notes that Christina highlighted for us on the expense side. General education. The one thing there is that we do have four long-term subs, and that I don't, I didn't get the sense that that presented a concern or a worry or anything. It was just something that created some uncertainty going in because long-term sub expenses are not encumbered as typical teacher expenses. So something to watch, but not something to worry about.
But they show up in the general education line?
Right, and so if you see, there's a note...
Oh, I see, four long-term subs.
But there are four long-term subs. So that's, it's something that, until we kind of close, I don't think we're going to know if that's something that's going to be up or down. There was some unplanned facilities expense with the flood in this, it was in this room, right? And I guess it was some costs that were not reimbursable by insurance, I guess, because they were somehow related to exterior and piping water around from outside that then backed up into here, which caused the flood to come up through the floor. And I think she also noted there are a few extra expenses in special ed expenses. So no worries, no concerns that she flagged for us. Committee members might miss anything that we should highlight. I will just, if nothing on the revenues, I will just follow up on the discussion we had. There was the possibility, I guess, to apply for... And this, when you look at the report in the capital fund, it talks about something we were going to talk about at our meeting. And so just to recap on that, there's a... As many are following from the federal government, Esser funds are being pulled back, the extra Esser funds. There is a remote possibility we could throw in a very late proposal for improvements at the middle school playground. I guess word is that for any of these late proposals, I don't know if that's the right word, but that's the general idea, is supposed to be reading in nature. That is at least the unofficial word that's being heard. So making the tie between an outdoor playground and literacy improvement might be a bit of a stretch. And I think from a, in a practical perspective, if we were to go for that, I think Libby would have to do it tomorrow, and we would have to basically build the thing immediately. Talking to Libby, Tom, and Christina, it seemed like there's a much better opportunity to have a thoughtful and planned approach, potentially involving students in the middle school to think about and vision what their improvements could be there. And so that seems to be the preferred approach. And with the idea that it would be unlikely that we receive any funds in this Esser solicitation, we all thought it made sense to pass on that and do the more thoughtful approach.
And then how would we pay for it? Would it be a capital fund?
It would be capital fund balance type of approach, but we would look at that within the context of overall capital needs. So I think, generally speaking, a much more thoughtful improvement approach. That is the report I have. If there are any additions from committee members, I'll maybe move right now that we accept the third quarter financials as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Rhett's got it. Any questions or discussion? I did have a question on the expenses side. For the ones that are, if we're three quarters of the way through the year, and we've got expenses that are more like we've spent 88% of the budget or 98% of the budget, are any of those ones where we think, okay, we should be, we're probably going to go over budget for the year? Or are there some of those where we're like, oh, no, we should be actually spending 90% by this time of the year because there's almost nothing left to spend for the last quarter?
Yeah, no, it's a question as I understand that this is a... This is the new presentation that Christine has been doing, where she's presenting actuals and encumbered. So when you look at the percentage, that is both, that's a percent of funds that have actually been spent, but that are encumbered for spending in the balance of the fiscal year. So it doesn't mean that we've spent necessarily 88% or 89%. It means that we've spent or encumbered it.
Okay.
We will spend it. Libby, is that a fair...
Yeah, and if she's got no concerns there, if there's nothing in the comments area, then she legitimately has no concerns. Like where it says generally, like, education, the comment is for long-term subs.
Right.
So that could potentially go over.
Got it, that's the uncertainty.
Yeah.
Okay.
So she's telling the board where that you could look at that. And like, technical education there is 37% encumbered and spent because it comes later in the year, so...
And is, I don't understand what encumbrance means. So we plan to spend it?
Yeah, yeah.
We can use it for something else.
Right, you've stated you're spending that.
Got it, got it. Now I understand it. Anybody have any other questions?
I think it's a good way to present it. I appreciate that she split it out like that. I think it took me, it's taken me a while to get used to it, honestly, but I think ultimately it's helped us get a better picture. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, I do too. We have all of these teachers. We know what we're paying them. We know how long we're paying them for. We might as well account for it.
She's good. Oh, yeah, Rhett?
Looking down at the last page, the fund balance piece and the track improvements. Is there, is all of that going as expected? Is there still quite a bit more to be spent or encumbered? Is it, we're going to need as much as was originally committed? Or is that not yet known, or...
I don't know it off the top of my head. Somebody might, but I don't. But I can certainly find out for you, Rhett.
I mean, I hope that...
It's not, it's not a challenge at all to find out. So I can certainly find out. I just haven't been a part of those conversations and what their plans are for it.
I'm hoping that kids get nicely improved facilities as best as we can.
Yeah, I know they've been working on it. I'm going to look at my track star over there. Where the softball field is, there's like a, is it a discus throw, a pole vault? Those are the track equipment pieces I know. I don't actually know what they are, but I'm not a track athlete.
I think the softball area was either going to be shot put or discus.
It's something like that. It's something flying to keep away from the running athletes.
Yeah, I don't think we're equipped for pole. I think it's high jumps that we are trying to get nicer for, and then long jump as well. But fortunately, we're able to go to U32 most days in practice there. But yes, everyone would like a less dirt track, but, you know.
Not everyone.
But I can certainly get that and put it in maybe my next superintendent's report?
Sure, yeah. The lantern parade went around, and there were some poles, which I'm guessing are for netting for safety for one reason or another.
Oh, those poles at the end, one end, yeah.
Yeah, the netting went up because it's to keep the lacrosse balls from hitting the lacrosse, or the track kids in the head.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard with all the practices. It's fortunate that we go to U32 a lot, but the middle schoolers also come to the high school. And lacrosse practices there has games there frequently. And, you know, the nets are good, they're high on the ends, but not on the sides. The sides, you just have to watch out.
Yeah, any other questions on the third quarter report? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? All right, next order of business is the state of affairs for education in Vermont, brought to us by Libby Bonesteal.
Yeah, doing the best she can.
Which is all we ever ask.
All right, let me share my screen with those folks at home. Does that look okay from your end? Yeah, okay, good.
And school board members do have it as well.
Yeah, everybody can pull it up to follow along.
Okay, so this is the legislative update and forecast. And when I say forecast, it's Libby Bonesteal's educated opinion and guess as to forecast. So I want to put that out there. This bill is not law as of yet. It's in the hands of the Senate right now, which I'll talk about in a minute. And it will likely change a lot in the Senate's hands. So I can answer as many questions as I can, some with some fact of what people have presented thus far, some with my educated opinions, and some with me looking straight to Jake and Jill to talk about tax impacts. And some that all three of us are probably going to say, I have no idea, because we haven't figured that out yet. So there is this idea for transformation in Vermont for education. I do put that in quotes because I'm not possible, I'm not positive if that, if any of these plans actually achieve that, but that's the point, that's the goal. Just a little timeline of how we got here. Last year, there was, they changed the weights. The legislature changed the weights. It was the first year for that. There was other huge financial pressures on budgets, including a large healthcare increase and salary increases. And that was a result of a third of school budgets going down last year in the first attempt. Some didn't have, like Barry didn't have a school budget until this fall for their school district. So then the governor's inaugural address. During that time, Governor Scott stated that he believed that his reelection plus the failed budgets equaled a mandate to bring down property taxes. And he, that was the first time he announced a major education transformation plan. January through March of this year, testimony began. Of course, our legislature begins their work in January, so it couldn't have started any earlier. And agency of education officials begin to testify during this time on pieces of their plan. They roll it out pretty slowly for legislation and with a lot of help from outside consultants work. Local education officials, including yours truly, counter a lot of the state's testimony or offer an alternative perspective on certain aspects of it. And the discussion starts to center around districts consolidation, school choice, and a foundation formula. And in February, the agency, the agency or the state entity presents H454. That's taken up by the House Education to revise as a strike-through bill. So the House Education did not create their own bill. They used what the state provided in order to play within the same sandbox. House Ways and Means, at the same time, was working on developing the foundation formula for the bill. The governor's plan in H454 had a foundation formula in it, and the House Ways and Means looked at it to revise, just like the House Education looked at it to revise. Let's echo it somewhere. You guys jump in, let's say anything wrong. So there are some ideas between the, what I'm going to call the House, because they were the main, the House Education and House Ways and Means were the main committees that really dug into this bill in a way that gave some thought to the ideas to it. Senate Education and Senate Finance did as well, but not as in-depth, I would argue. So for instance, superintendents were, superintendents or the Vermont Superintendent's Association and the Vermont School Boards Association were in the House Education Committee almost every day, if not every other day. And VSA testified once, was invited to testify once in front of Senate Education. So they had different priorities as this bill was moving through. So there are ideas in H454 that, where there appears to be agreement between the House and the governor's plan. I say with stars there between the legislature and the governor's office, because I don't know how much of the public actually understands or is paying attention, as evidenced by there's no public here as we're talking about it, right? So I don't know if there's any agreement in public opinion, nor do I know if the public truly agrees with the governor that his reelection and failed budgets equals a mandate for a lot of change. But that is a Libby Bonesteal opinion that others might share. So where there appears to be some agreement is that the idea of increased scale across the board in larger districts filled school buildings, an alignment of graduation requirements across school buildings, and an alignment of one school calendar for the state, and alignment in data systems in the terms of student and financial systems. Okay, there seems to be a wide agreement that those things should happen between the legislative body, composed mainly of the House Education Committee and House Ways and Means, and the governor's plan. What that looks like is five basic buckets. So there, where I say appears to be agreement, they're not agreeing on what it is. They're agreeing on the theme more than anything, okay? So that's important to know. So there seems to be an agreement that governance structures could use some change in Vermont. Governance structures are you all, are school boards, when we say that. There seems to be an agreement that there's some room to achieve an economy of scale in schools and districts across Vermont. There seems to be an agreement that the funding formula needs to change, and the agreement appears to be focusing in on a foundation formula, which is the direct opposite of how we fund schools now. And there seems to be an agreement that there should be a legislative timeline for change. What that timeline is, there's no agreement there. But there seems, there's an agreement that there should be a timeline, and it should be done legislatively, not up to school boards and districts. So that's about where the agreements end, pretty much, just around the themes. So there are different strategies to achieve these themes that I can walk through a little bit. And I'd say, write questions. This isn't a long presentation, so if you have questions, write them down, and we'll talk about it afterwards, yeah? So under governance structure, the House bill wants to do this thoughtfully and use the Commission on the Future of Education to develop three different plans for the legislative body to consider by 2026. The governor's plan wants to immediately consolidate our current system of governance into five statewide school districts with five school boards. In terms of achieving scale, the House would like to establish class size minimum standards. And when I was listening to a lot of testimony on this, they were using our policy as a model policy for class size minimums, which I was pleased to see because I think we have a pretty good class size policy. And establish a high school size, no less than 450 students unless necessary. That's the wording in H454 right now. They passed on establishing a K through 8 size.
Enrollment size?
Yeah, they passed on that. They did not want to touch it. The governor's plan does not assume a minimum. It assumes that K through, kindergarten through, excuse me, third grades have 15 students per class, and grades 4 through 12 have 25 students per class. Okay, so they're kind of setting the norm of class size. And it completely ignores school size. So there's a link in the presentation that I won't go into great depth on right now, but I highly recommend you look at this. I testified on this in Senate Finance a couple months ago. And the agency of education relied on a consulting firm, or collaborated with a consulting firm out of Colorado, I believe, called APA. And they, they put together, based on this Picas report that was written around school size, what they believe school staffing should be. And that's how they based their adequacy rate, which we'll get to with the funding formula later on, right? That's how they based some of their numbers on. And so my testimony and what I wanted to find out was, okay, here's what Picas and the agency of education suggest for staffing for school sizes. Here's our staff, here's our school size. So it's like a ratio, it's a percentage of the Picas size. And where we're currently staffed. And so if we went with the funding formula that the agency was presenting, what would that mean for us, right? That's what I wanted to find out. What it would mean for us if we took them for their word in the governor's plan, we would be riffing about 100 positions in our, in our school district. And it's about a $3.3 million difference. So there's some connection with the funding formula. But I put that in there just as like a way to look. One way to look at it. It's nothing to get excited about, or it's nothing to get really worried or anxious about. It's just an interesting data point for us to consider. In terms of funding formula, the House bill has a transition from the current formula to a foundation formula by 2029. And the governor would like this to happen in 2027. So with the scale that they've suggested, so that would be potential pretty deep cuts for MRPS in two years. So to, I believe Tim emailed a question to me, like, when would this come into play? It depends on which plan you're looking at and what the Senate decides to do with it. So right now, it's anywhere from FY '28, from school board language, when you're, right, Jake, when you're planning out budget years, FY '28 to FY '30. In school years, it would be not next year. We'll go through, we'll most likely go through a regular budget season next year, like we have in the past, using what we do now for education funding. Governor would like the year after to move into a foundation formula, Governor would like the year after to move into a foundation formula and the House would like to take longer in terms of the timeline. In terms of timeline, the House bill transitions year to year with new districts operational in July of two thousand twenty-nine. The governor has a much more accelerated plan to restructure everything by July two thousand twenty-seven. I was a part of a timeline sprint team with the Agency of Education. And as part of that work, I created an actual timeline of, with superintendent colleagues of all the work that would need to happen. Because I simply didn't believe that the governor's team truly understand said all the things that would need to happen in order to do this change, not even thoughtfully, but just in order to do this change. And you can see that work. I, I put it all on paper based on what my knowledge is with MRPS. And then I shared it with business managers, curriculum directors, superintendents, and they added a lot to it. So if anybody can look at that timeline, you can see that there's, there's a lot of work that's happened, that needs to happen in order to make anything like this a reality. Mainly because it's not like the merger that Montpelier Roxbury experienced in two thousand seventeen, eighteen. It's not a bigger district taking in a smaller district. It's quite literally making a new district, like a brand spanking new district where nobody's like subsuming another one. And so that takes more time and effort with that. So if we keep going.
And Libby, I just also shared with the board the timeline that Joint Fiscal Office did of just the House bill. I mean, as of the moment, knowing it could change.
Yeah, I think I showed that too.
I think you did.
Yeah. Okay, so with the House bill, it preserves the State Board of Education as a publicly accountable body. In the governor's plan, it takes a lot of that, a lot of the role of the State Board and centralizes it under the Agency of Education. In terms of tuitioning, the House bill wants to limit tuition to approved independent schools in Vermont that serve a majority of Vermont students. And in the governor's plan, it creates a, a new school choice statewide. Like, so each of those five mega districts would have choice within it as well as the independent schools, or it could be part, the independent schools could be part of that school choice that serve a majority of Vermont students. So it's widening school choice under rules. And school construction, the, the House bill creates a plan that prioritizes construction aid by need. And school construction is not addressed at all in the governor's plan. They don't mention it. So in terms of the funding formula, I created me off of some of your questions. I just created a little handy dandy chart today and yesterday. So you can see in the second column there where it's Act one twenty-seven weights and where it says MRPS FY twenty-six, that's our per pupil spending. So keep in mind the way that education is funded right now, every district has a different per pupil spending, right? The found, because it's what we ask for, based on our budget. The foundation formula would say you don't do that anymore. There is a base per pupil amount that you get. So that's where the base equals there, or an adequacy amount, depending on what people are calling it. So you can see what the weights were for Act one twenty-seven, and there I put them in there for you. And then you can see in H four fifty-four, this is based on work by Tammy Colby, who is a Montpelier Roxbury parent. And she also was the lead researcher with the Act one twenty-seven weights. So she is highly versed in Vermont budgeting, Vermont needs Vermont proficiency. So those are in revised, Tammy's revised work. And there's also a link to, I guess it's a policy brief that, that Tammy Colby wrote. If you want more information about how she came to her numbers. Right there, you can see her name is, is linked. And then the governor's plan also linked, his plan is also linked in here with their base rate and the weights with the small schools having lots of weights. So I just, I just kind of pasted it right from the governor's plan instead of making lots of different rows for that. A big change would be in special education that I'm not actually completely positive about right now. I'm not, I, I don't have all the information I need, but currently we have a block grant for special education. And I believe in both H four fifty-four and the governor's plan, the waiting for, the block grant would go away and waiting would be based on special education determination.
That wasn't in the governor's plan, but it is in H four fifty-four.
Okay, I wasn't positive about that. I can correct that so that we have the right information. So is the block grant still?
In the governor's plan, yeah, the block grant would still exist, but the APA was suggesting that they should maybe do a wait eventually.
An additional wait, yeah. I'll, I'll correct that in this presentation, so we make sure that we have the right information because I wasn't positive on that. So last week, the bill was in the, H four fifty-four was in the House's hands. It made it through, through the House with some amendments. The amendments to the original bill from the House Education and Ways and Means was that it changed the composition of the redistricting working group to include some legislatures, which is not a huge amendment. It added a working group that would work in parallel to redistricting group to create voting wards. And this was an attempt to make the timeline quicker. It was a concession. And then adding a study committee to study the impacts of taxing different types of properties at different tax rates in response to the business community's concerns about dividing up the non-homestead tax categories. So there were small amendments coming out of the House. It's now, it's now in the Senate. I'm skipping two, two slides here because I think they're out of order. The bill is now in the Senate. It was at the first reading by Senate Education and Finance Committees on Monday, four fifteen?
That's yesterday.
Yesterday, Tuesday. They don't work on Mondays.
And they didn't finish. They're still making their way through it.
They're still making their way through it. It's a long bill. We do have some expectations in the Senate. We expect the Senate to make major significant amendments to the bill. There is lots of lobbying happening right now from school choice advocates as well as the Rural School Collaborative that do not want any kind of consolidation because they're reading the tea leaves and that that would mean closing small schools. They also don't like the class sizes. And there could be a reduction in the adequacy amount from the House version. That actually hasn't been stated, but it's kind of what people are talking about a little bit.
That's the base amount for the foundation formula?
Yeah, and the governor is, is already signaling the House bill as is would be vetoed. So it's likely to head to conference committees where they'll duke it out. So if we go back to the last slide where it's main takeaways, these are ideas that may happen. When I first made this presentation, that said ideas that most likely will happen. However, because I'm not positive what the Senate is going to do, like this is Libby Bone Steel's opinion right here. Other people can have different opinions. The consolidation of districts may happen. It might be too hard. It might be that the legislators get so much pushback, they don't have the votes to do that because of the lobbying with small, with the Small Rural Schools Collaborative and the independent schools. So who we would merge with if that were to happen? It depends on the appropriate size of district that eventually will be decided by the legislature, right? The governor's plan has mega districts that has no research to back up actually being efficient. They actually, there's actually research that says they're not efficient at that size. And the legislature is working off of a two to four thousand range right now. The foundation formula most likely will happen. I'm looking at my experts over here. Yeah, most likely will happen in the next few years. Statewide class size, district calendars, student information finance systems, those will probably happen as well. District calendar, we're like, there's like three districts who are, have a different start day next year. And other than that, we have a, we have a state calendar. So there's like two differences. So we're, we're there on that already.
Libby, can I ask you a question about the, like vacations statewide? Because this is the southern part of the state.
Yeah, next year, we're all on the same calendar. Like Supes made an effort to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we're all in the same, we have different negotiated agreements, so it's not exactly the same, but our vacations are lined up next year.
Fantastic.
Yeah, and school start date is lined up with the exception of the Lumoil schools, essentially. I think they're the only ones. Ideas that need to happen to recognize scale and achieve financial efficiency. School size determination at all levels. So one thing that the secretary, one piece of language that the Secretary of Education, Secretary Saunders has brought in is small by necessity versus small by choice. I think that does need to be decided upon, like with numbers. Like, that's not just a guess that people can find loopholes through, but that, that is an important factor that needs to be figured out. Without figuring out what's small by necessity versus small by choice, then there's going to be either cuts to programming increases in taxes. There's no other way to save money except looking at schools. School construction and a renovation fund has to happen in order to realize this. My buddy Mike Lickletter over at Harwood tells how he could easily combine two very close elementary schools that are like, I don't know, four or five miles apart, but he needs renovation for like, to fit two classes in, right? Like, so the school building itself is a problem. And that's just one story out of many from superintendents who are, who say, yeah, I could merge very easily two buildings. However, the building itself either is in such dire straits or we would need a new building. Up north, for instance, if they were to merge all into one building for, you know, high school, they would need to build a new building, new high school building to fit the kids. So we need to deal with, as a state, the healthcare increases. Next year, we're predicted to go anywhere between seventeen and twenty percent right now. A lack of housing and a lack of community-based mental health supports for kids and families. We have to deal with that in order to get costs down. And there's the fact that's like kind of the white elephant in the room, but may actually come to fruition. Doing nothing is really not sustainable. It will just be, continue to be increased, increased property taxes or gutting programming for kids. And those are Libby Bone Steel's opinions. So keep that in mind.
That's how the D C is.
Exactly. On the where's the bill now, at the bottom, there is a policy brief by a UVM professor that's focusing on the major, she really challenges the governor's plan that, and makes some pretty good points to that. So it's worth a read. It's not very long. It's like four pages.
Rhett, Rhett printed it out in case anybody wants it in hard copy.
There you go.
Yeah, real paper.
So I am, I am happy to try to answer any questions that the board has. I can, and I will preface answers with this is Libby's opinion versus this is what I know or I don't know, or I'll look straight to Jill and Jake to give tax information and money information, probably.
The Libby's opinion question, do you think if there was a wait for special ed, that it would go back to the same problem that, that there was before the block grant, whereas over diagnosis?
Yeah, you're, you're, you're asking us to, I don't know if it, see, here's my thing on that. Yes, right? It does, it does benefit a school district then to identify a student with special needs because you're giving us money, right? And it could be a kid who doesn't need a whole lot of services, but you're still getting more money, right? I don't know if educators think that way though. You know, when they're, when they're making the determination and talking about which gates they're going through and all that kind of stuff. It's not like, well, we need some money, you know, like nobody's, nobody's thinking about that. Would it be easier though, knowing if a, if a student's identified and we know we're going to get money paid for that specialized services? Does that ease some pressure maybe? I don't know. I mean, if a student has a disability, a student has a disability and qualifies, then we can qualify them. So I don't know. So there is the theory that that benefits schools to, to identify more kids. I don't know if it's accurate though.
I feel like, you know, some, some other state must have a reasonable solution in that space, you know? I don't know what they're doing, but, because I, but I don't, I know what Vermont did to try to correct it. And then this would be going back to the pre-block grant type of, I mean, it's different, but it's.
Yeah, it is different because I think these weights are based on disability category and adding more weights to disability categories that require more services, is my understanding.
Yeah, I think that might be true.
Yeah.
And also my other question, Libby's opinion question is like, what does it matter? You know, what the, the amount of money is, like, if, if, what's to compel a school district to actually spend it on that student? You know, if you have a student who's in poverty, who's learning a foreign language and is special ed, maybe they generate seventy-five thousand dollars of state money, but the district doesn't have to spend it on that student.
Well, it's not the way we, we think of budgeting.
Right.
Right.
You could, I mean, like, my, my terrible example with Act one twenty-seven was like, all right, you have this heavy English language learner weight. You could take that money and send your AP English kids to England for a semester to study Shakespeare. Like, there's no, there's no.
Because it goes into one pot.
Right.
Yeah.
So why, what's, why, you know, why?
Or you don't spend it. You know, you have school districts who, you know, with one twenty-seven, they, they got a significant tax capacity increase and they didn't take it. They, you know, they voted down their budget.
Well, it was eaten up by everybody else's tax increase or spending increase.
Right.
So I, I just don't get it, like, you know, shouldn't the money go to the students at least in some way? Like, should there be a general tracking or, like, should, should there be a law that says, you know, you shall spend your education opportunity payment in proportion to the students who are generating it or something?
Generating the money. Yeah, I'm not sure. It makes sense because what you're saying is correct, right? You could have multilingual learners and not hire multilingual teachers.
Right.
But have that revenue coming in. I think that would be, I think that's a, while that is a, an accurate statement, I don't know of a school district that would do that, right? Like, if, if there's a need, multilingual is a good example, right? They're not going to let that need.
Well, I'm a tax guy, so I'm always thinking loopholes.
I have trust in my educator colleagues. They, they get the services they need.
I see that Jim has a question. Why don't we get a stack going?
Yeah, so, so assuming you go to a foundation formula, how would that actually work in terms of the budget? Would like, you know, X district has five thousand students, so it's just five thousand times fifteen thousand and that is what goes to the district and the budget is kind of set? Or would the district have the ability to say, well, that's great, but we want to spend an extra seven thousand dollars students. So we're going to separately raise funds and be better than everyone else. And then does that have a, create a Brigham problem?
Yes. So the answer there to all of that is yes. There's no or, right? So yes, we would get one set amount that we would know, which would help with budgeting purposes to, to know, right? And we, we would be designing our programming based on that amount that we have. There is some, and I'm going to use my buddy Jake over here to add anything on. There is some provisions to try to figure out how a district could raise more money proportional to every district in the state, so no one district. So CBU can't raise a significantly more amount of money than Franklin Northeast can. I don't believe we really have the mechanism to do that yet. And there's a Brigham problem. So for our public, Brigham was a Supreme Court's case here in Vermont that says that all students need, deserve an equitable education regardless of their zip code. That is not happening right now with our current funding formula. So right now, we are against Brigham.
And, and the adjusted weights were an attempt to make that happen, but it didn't work.
Didn't work, right?
And, and then so, so that foundation formula would be the same for each district, even if, say, you know, whatever district that Chittenden County becomes, which probably has a much higher percentage of, say, English language learners that are more expensive to educate, it would still be fifty thousand for each student. So proportionally, they could have higher education expenses and still get the same.
The base rate would be the same, but if they have more, everybody has the weights. So it's the base.
The weights are added to the.
So the weights are.
Incorporated in somehow to the.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So it'd be very similar to what we have now.
So it's the base plus?
Yeah, it's the base plus your weighted student count.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which is an, an attempt at equality, right? At, at fixing the Brigham problem. If we're talking about this, it's a Brigham problem. It's an attempt at fixing it.
The Brigham challenge.
Challenge, that's a good word for it.
I, I did listen to Jake testify one time a month or so ago, and I literally texted him afterward. I was like, you made my head spin. Like, I, and I don't know if that's even anywhere near fruition right now, what you testified on that one day.
The state guarantee?
Yeah.
They're, they're trying to figure out the mechanism that you were just describing. And the H four fifty-four has a different construct, but it's pretty punitive. And it has a lot of, it has this like system where you could only generate as much as the school district with the lowest grand list per kid. And then any extra that you generate, because your grand list, your, your property value is more, it goes into the school construction fund. So it, it, it's pretty punitive and it would siphon a lot of property tax money away from the ed funded into the separate fund that doesn't exist. So that kind of creates pressure on its own. But it's, it's clever. It was thought of by the Chair of Ways and Means and it's, it's pretty smart.
To try to fund a construction.
The way she did it, to make the math work out, is different. The, the way she did it, to make the math work out, is different than the way the administration proposed, which was also clever, but, I don't know, didn't fly.
Yeah.
All right, we've got Rhett next.
I thought of that as like a luxury tax. Can you, can you clarify that a little bit more? It's not a luxury tax, it's related to property values? That way that they just, just talked about funding this kind of school construction, construction fund?
I'm totally looking for these guys, because I, I get the consolidation part, I did not get the funding part.
I can read really quickly from Julia Richter, who's from the Joint Fiscal Office. So the supplemental district spending is what it's called, so that you're allowed to vote to approve supplemental district spending above and beyond your education opportunity spending. It's raised through a local supplemental district spending rate, and the rate is calculated in a manner so that all school districts could raise the same amount above the foundation formula at the same tax rate regardless of property wealth. As a result, the rate would be set so all districts have the same taxing capacity as a district with the lowest property wealth. So it'd be based on, let's see. So specifically, the supplemental district spending tax rate would be calculated by dividing a district's per pupil supplemental district spending by the supplemental district spending yield. The yield would be calculated as the amount of property tax revenue per long-term ATM, I'm assuming what that is, that would be raised in the school district with the lowest taxing capacity at a rate of a dollar per one hundred equalized education property value.
I think the, I mean, it is deep, deep in there. The important things to know about it are that, so the district would get this big pot of money called educati, educational opportunity payment, or the foundation formula amount, right? And then you could spend over it, and it would be exposed to a yield, kind of like now. We, we have, you know, we all talk about the yield quite a bit, so, but the difference is that the yield could be determined very early, and it wouldn't be a function of what other districts do. Right now, it's a function of what other districts do. So that's an improvement, and then you'd calculate your rate. You'd say like, oh, I want to spend an extra two thousand dollars a kid, and the yield is four thousand dollars, so that's gonna be like fifty cents, right? Because two thousand, four thousand is point five, right? So, so that's the way that we would experience it. And we would be able to raise the same as everybody else, and it's possible that, or it's likely that districts will raise more than they actually need for their kids. But to prevent a Brigham problem, the extra amount is gonna go into a separate pot.
That's the school construction pot?
Yeah.
Okay. So I just have a clarifying question, Tim, and then we'll go to you. When you say, that was helpful, I think I'm close to there. When you say the yield is four thousand, and let's say we need to raise another two thousand per kid, is that how you put it? Yeah, so the rate is fifty cents, that would be an extra fifty cents on the dollar for taxes? Is that what you mean when you say the rate? Okay, and then the way the law is written right now, what they're saying is everybody in the state is gonna get a fifty percent tax rate if they want to do this supplemental spending, or no matter what, whether or not they want to do the supplemental spending. Like, if my Pelia Roxbury, or our new mega district, wanted to do the supplemental spending, the other four districts would have to do it too, if we were at five, no, okay.
You can always choose, but if a district that wanted to do two thousand, they'd have an extra fifty cent rate. If that makes sense, but you could choose to do zero.
Right, but if another district wanted to do three thousand, they would have a point seven five rate? Even if we wanted, so then how is the rate the same statewide? I thought that was part of it.
Which rate?
Every, they pay a tax rate the same as every other district.
If they're spending the same amount per kid, it would be the same, but they have the choice on how much above the foundation formula that they want to spend.
Got it. Okay, okay, all right, Tim.
Dump this down a little bit for me, like, right now, we present a budget to people. Is that still happening? Okay, so that's off the table, and so what we present.
That's a really good question.
Good started, good started ones.
No, it's a really good question, I'm not, I'm not, like, I'm giggling at your kind of tone, but I'm not giggling at the question. The question is a very good one.
So we're not presenting a budget, there's, that's this base amount that is, we're all presumed to spend. The only thing that's being presented to voters, and the only way that a voter of a district can interact with this question is the question of supplemental, can they decrement it too? Can they say, no, so?
So that we will no longer, with a foundation formula, vote on a budget? That's not to say the community wouldn't have input on a budget, I think that.
So how does that work?
The input would be more of like feedback gathering of programming and, you know, things we do currently, right?
It's softer, not like a hard vote.
Right, exactly, but there would be no town meeting day vote on a budget that could go down.
Only on the supplemental deal.
Only on the supplemental deal.
Under these brand-new voting wards, right?
Right.
It would like bonding be the same? Like, say a district wanted to.
For a new building, for a new high school, for example.
Build a new high school, or, you know.
That is, my understanding of that is that that is legislation they still have to tackle.
Yeah.
Because, do they, so like Massachusetts has a pretty good, and Rhode Island, I understand, I think, have a pretty good school construction way where it's like carrots and sticks, you know? So, so if North Country wants to build a new high school, and they need a bond for it, and they're going to close some school buildings in order to make that happen, that's beneficial to this plan, right? That might be approved, but if Colchester High School wants to build a new high school because they want a new high school, I'm just picking on my buddy Amy in Colchester, like, there, there's no, there's no reason why I would pick that. But then that might not be approved, right?
So it wouldn't be local voters who vote up or down on the bond? It's a, it's some, something happening at the state level saying?
I think there's more, that, that has not been decided yet, like, all of that still needs to be worked out.
The board recommending it to the state instead of approving it?
That's what happens in Massachusetts, like, there's a whole bunch of community input, and the state has to approve it eventually, and the state kicks in money, a percentage of it, if it hits these buckets and.
But the, so what are the boards left doing? Hiring and firing superintendents, basically.
Policy.
Policy.
Policy, and determining a programming is, you know?
Right.
If programming and matches the desires.
Accountability.
Boards in bigger districts would be less tied to local communities and more of a political entity. Would be an outcome of this.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
So which books and keep-in library?
Yeah.
And, and probably boards into people that have more stepping stones. Well.
Yes.
You mean it isn't now?
You've run for it.
If there are only five districts and you're talking about twenty-five board members, that's a pretty powerful position. More powerful than being in the House. Those, and, 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 and a lot of money is gonna get poured in based on this report from the person at UVM. If you're only talking about twenty-five total board members in the state, those are gonna be, there's gonna be massive funding that comes from all kinds of national interests that is gonna get involved in supporting candidates. So that's a, that's a, you know, that's, I, I, I don't know what the governor wants, but I don't know that anyone necessarily wants massive federal financial support coming in to decide on these really, really powerful positions that end up swaying hundreds of millions of dollars.
Well, powerful unless they don't really have any decisions that they make, other than oversight of the superintendent.
No, I think if you look at school boards nationally in bigger districts, it's a, it's a stepping stone to state legislation.
Sure.
And, you know, groups like Moms of Liberty, and I'm sure some liberal groups that I don't know about, probably pay a lot of money to ensure that their views are represented on said school board. And if they are in charge of the superintendent of schools, the position does have a significant amount of power, right? And if their boss is telling them that they need to move the district in a certain direction, they're gonna move the district in a certain direction, so, or they're out a job. So there, there is, there are consequences there through the power over the superintendent.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think you will get more politicized boards, as you mentioned, but I think some issues that we don't talk about a lot, that if you watch boards in other states, that we don't talk about a lot, will become, talk to come anymore.
Yeah, yeah. I do want to just reiterate that I don't believe the governor's plan will come to fruition. I think there's too many problems in it, so I do want to, like, however, that's the plan on the table, right?
Yeah. Oh, Ammani and, and then Rhett.
Well, I actually wanted to reply to what Rhett was saying, like, yeah, you're totally right, like, Daniela Sutherland's article is fascinating and should be read, because it, like, it hits every point of the governor's plan that seems like it won't work. And it's gonna have, like, currently, there are like nine hundred board members in Vermont, that would go down to twenty-five, and there are a hundred fifty Vermont House of Representatives. And what I appreciated most in her article was just like her stating that even though, like, we can't afford to implement the governor's plan, we can't afford to continue with the current system. And I think that this is a very important article, and also, I think that anyone looking at the governor's plan should see like many red flags, because it just like doesn't seem possible for a state that loves its like local roots and the small schools that are there by necessity over choice. And, you know, I think that class size is definitely talked about a lot, but I think there's a difference between, you know, needing the minimum class size and having like a mandatory amount in every class. Because also, when you said in your presentation, like, K through eight, and then nine through, or K through three, and then four through twelve.
Four through twelve.
How is that even categorized? Because in high school, you aren't like in classes by grade, theoretically.
It's a, it's a question we've asked.
Okay.
I have two separate questions, one's very speculative, they're both really speculative, but one of them is a little bit more pertinent. I mean, the first question is, does anyone have a sense of why the governor has more faith in the Senate than the House to make adjustments to 454?
I think it's the Senate makeup between Republicans and Democrats.
But, okay.
There's a smaller majority of Democrats.
And I'm sure, and I'm, but, you know, I'm sure rural spaces and populance and population density has a big effect, could almost have a greater effect than whether you're on the left or the right.
Yeah.
My question is, if, if you're talking about a foundation formula, which I think there's pretty clear, it seems like some variation of that will come through. Currently, the foundation formula in the House bill is more than our current per people spending.
The base, before the weights are applied.
Yeah, and I can speak to that a little bit, but go ahead.
But we, I, one, you know, you, you suggested that we wouldn't have to adjust the way that we think of our budget next year. But if the tea leaves are at the bottom of the cup, and they suggest that the foundation formula is gonna change our budget dramatically, would we want to begin to address those changes in next year's budget? Because we don't want to get hit too, we don't want to hit our teachers too hard, and we don't want to hit our programming too hard the way we would have, the way we kind of, you know, had to last year.
If we know what that will be, and it's modeled well, then yes, we will, we will need to start thinking.
Could be a really hard year.
Yeah, we will need to start thinking that way, if we know what the number's gonna be.
Right.
And we can model it out.
And if it's gonna be smaller, because right now, it's bigger.
With, I don't think it's gonna stay that way, but yeah.
Yeah.
Tammy Colby did her modeling, my understanding of it is based on what it would take to get schools to proficiency with an MTSS model, which is why hers is, is more costly. The, the, the governor's plan adequacy amount, just so the board understands, like, if you look at those staffing ratios, they said one interventionist per four hundred fifty place school. They had central offices without human resources, human resource offices for one of their mega districts, right? They didn't, they didn't have that in their, like, there's, there's gaping holes that are not accounted for in that, in that number, in that adequacy number from the governor's plan.
Okay, Jim, and then I'm gonna go.
But in terms of, of planning, though, is the, is the foundation formula gonna come in? So, I mean, obviously, you don't know this, but if the foundation formula and the structural chain comes in at the same time, then planning, we might do, you know, that first year for the next board, they might be looking at, you know, a district that includes all of Washington County or a lot of things, so, you know, so it might be moving teachers around. It might be a totally different superintendent. It, you know.
Libby, we're gonna play beer pong to get to where.
It's good to be superintendent.
We've got a whole game planned out.
So we might not have any.
Do you have an advantage with that?
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, maybe.
We could talk later.
Yeah, you're, you're an athlete. But.
I don't know if I want that job.
Yeah, but it seems like there would be a, a planning challenge in terms of, it's not just our district with a different foundation formula, it could be a totally different district where.
Right, yes.
You know, teachers are moved around, schools are consolidated, et cetera, so.
Yes.
It might be hard to isolate us from the.
Right, by people who don't know the schools and the people.
So.
Or do would have different borders.
Rhett and Jim have started moving us in this direction, but I, I wanted to, first of all, I really appreciate you sharing all of this with us and with the community, because I think on the, like, just at the very basic level, having this as an agenda item for a board meeting, it just helps inform the community, which we all should be paying attention to this, and people should be forming their own opinions about whether or not we should consolidate at all, and, you know, if that, if, if they agree with you that doing nothing is not sustainable, et cetera, et cetera. And also agree with Daniela of UVM that doing nothing is not sustainable. And if there's any things that we as a, any decisions or conclusions that we as a board might want to come to, I'd like to move that, the conversation in that direction. Not saying that we have to come to those decisions tonight, but there is something interesting here to me that you say the, you know, there are, there are people lobbying right now about this bill that we may not agree with, that those, the stances that those lobbyists are taking, and if we want to make sure that our perspective is heard, and I don't even know if we as a board have a perspective, but if we want to make sure our perspective is heard, we should probably share that with each other, so that we might want to actually get in on that game. I don't know, but it's something that I think is worth discussion for us to have.
The SBA is definitely lobbying for that.
Yeah, yeah, that, maybe that's, maybe we should start there, is, maybe I should ask it as a question, not so much as like, what do we as a board think? But what is, what are the other, what are the forces of?
Yeah, the V's. What are the V's doing?
I guess, what are the V's doing, but also, like, I'll just say, my opinion is, I think doing nothing is not sustainable. And so if there are ma, major forces that are saying maintain status quo, I do think that's a problem. So I'd like to know if somebody is, say, speaking up, I'm not saying like, I think 454 is a great bill, but if some, if they're, like, who's helping push this in a good direction?
Yeah, so Jake is absolutely correct. The VSA and the VSBA have done significant pushes to try to make this bill that's been presented, and this right-through version of it, as student and school-friendly as possible. Like, one piece that's missing from a lot of testimony are the students in all of this.
Well, there's nothing about outcomes.
Yeah, no, yeah.
In any of the points.
So the, the VSA and the VSBA have taken the tack that they see the writing on the wall in terms of consolidation probably needing to happen, in terms of a different financial formula. And so if those things are happening, a timeline, right? Let's do this as conducive as possible to schools, let's make sure we testify now. They have also created some enemies, enemies probably isn't the right, they've made some people very angry about taking these positions who are members of their organizations, because they. about taking these positions who are members of their organizations because they don't agree with that position. Um, one, for instance, is that in H fifty four, it pretty much gets rid of a supervisory union structure, um, which is school district, school district, and then a supervisory union board. It gets rid of that structure and we have, we have supervisory unions in the state who really like that structure um and don't want that to change at all, mostly because of small schools, right, and local control. So they're very angry that the VSA and the VSA have have testified, provided testify, testi-
Testimony.
Thank you, and um have backed that part of the bill. They're taking the stance of we could either oppose the whole thing or we could play in the sandbox and try to make it as good as possible.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's the tack they've taken.
Mm-hmm.
So there are that the NEA has not been a huge voice in this conversation. I think they're waiting to see where everything falls and then they'll maybe become a voice. They are the power, most powerful lobbying group up there and they've been relatively silent.
Interesting.
Um, and so that's kind of challenging, the VPA has taken the VSA and V and VSA's lead on this. So, um, well, that's a long answer to like, there there are people trying to work towards making it as feasible as possible.
Mm-hmm.
Right, like that timeline that the governor put out is not feasible, it's not good for kids, it's not good for staff, it's not good for communities. Um, and so we, like, that was my focus to really push against that timeline.
Yeah. Tim, you were.
Yeah, I was hoping that, I I don't know if if this is a fair question or if you could if you could characterize this, but if we could draw a bubble around um our students and our taxpayers in the Montpelier Roxbury District, is this bill good for the Montpelier Roxbury District? And that is to say, is there a greater likelihood of both educational outcome benefits and tax relief? Or is there a substantial risk of harm from going forward, again, just for our district? I'm really curious to to hear like sort of what problem this is solving for Montpelier Roxbury.
Um, so it would be moving to a different foundation formula across the state would be a tax rate that people can anticipate and wouldn't have huge swings like we see now. So that would be a benefit to the Montpelier Roxbury taxpayer, that's the thought anyway. In terms of our student, students, we would have a larger high school. And with a larger high school, because we'd probably merge our high school with U thirty two, right? Probably our middle school students would come here to this building. Um, but with a larger high school, with more kids in a high school, you can offer more things. So programming could potentially be expanded for our kids. And expanded for kids across the state, I should say, too, with larger high schools and when we're just looking at high schools. Uh, as far as our K through eight population, there would be, if I were just to focus on the tea leaves I can read, there would be a change in the makeup of who they're going to school with. So if, so if, because you can't, we can't have five through eight uh Wash Central and Montpelier Roxbury students in Main Street Middle School, they can't fit. So they probably, we'd probably change our middle school structure, so we we probably have a six through eight building.
Okay, I think you're presuming something that maybe it's clear, but it's is would the would the result of H four fifty four be were with Wash Central, is that sort of what the?
Yeah, at least, yeah. At the, at.
At least, okay.
That's almost like the guaranteed district, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
If not additional districts to that one.
Yeah.
Right.
The question is who's joining us, not are we joining?
And that's based on like a minimum number of pupils in a district, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cause right now, we wouldn't meet the minimums as our district alone, but would we meet them with in the H fifty uh four fifty four? But would we meet them with Wash Central?
We are just, right now, with our population at Montpelier High School, we are just below that minimum.
A high school of four hundred fifty kids is the minimum that's written in the bill right now?
Just ours is just below it, you're saying?
But even with that, our district size would be way below the minimum if they decide on a district size, right? So, um, so if we were to merge with U thirty two, depends on the district size, we would be around three thousand students.
Which is in the.
Depends on what they decide, so it's within the research base, it may not be within the what the legislation decides.
Cause right now, H fi- four fifty four instructs the Committee on the Future of Education, I think, to present them with three options for district sizes, right?
For essentially district maps.
District maps, three different district mapped options.
Yeah. They have to figure out the different district sizes.
Yeah, and then the legislature would then decide between those and one of the ones that's being talked about now, but isn't written in the legislation, is district sizes between two thousand to four thousand kids, right?
Okay. I think on the tax front, everybody would like property taxes to be lower. The way the governor's plan does it is by spending less on education. And the way H four fifty four does it is by trying to create new tax classifications to get uh second homeowners. Um, which if you could charge them more, then that would maybe provide relief to, you know, regular primary residence homeowners. But the second homeowners thing is like really, really difficult, no precedent in any other state, so it's quite a, quite a nut to try to crack.
What do you mean?
Oh, I didn't realize that.
Nobody does that, like Hawaii, two counties in Hawaii do it, but it's on the backbone of a really different zoning system. Hawaii also has one school district, for everybody's information.
Their superintendent has to fly to the different islands.
That is awesome, I mean, it's also Hawaii, so.
Well, we're not gonna compete with theirs, so.
I mean, at this, at this point, like, we see it as kind of like a Hail Mary, like, you know, just so, so hard to do, like even defining what a second home is, identifying them, um, and then, yeah, just wicked hard, so. Um, I don't know what's gonna happen with that.
Well, when it comes to taxes, the the main drivers are the fact that health insurance costs keep going up so dramatically and our statewide, our population is still, and so outside of this bill, obviously, they're not gonna put it in this bill, but they could tackle healthcare costs and they could tackle housing.
But how how is the foundation formula solve that, that you said it'll be more predictable if it's a foundation formula and whatnot, but if we still have the same eighteen percent healthcare and other cost pressures, how, is it just more predictably large?
No, it it wouldn't change based on healthcare, I believe there's like an inflationary rate baked in each year to increase the foundation formula.
Well, and the, does that just starve us?
Yeah.
You squeeze it down.
It just means we would have to cut programming.
Yeah.
Or or do that supplemental tax thing on top of whatever the foundation formula is providing us.
Well, that sounds like a kind of sneaky way to starve us, so.
It's not very sneaky, I mean, I I think they're pretty.
I mean, but.
I'll say about it.
It's not that different than the current state, I mean, we're squeezed by the health cost of healthcare every year, you know?
But we could take it to the voters, well, you're saying we can with the local tax?
Yeah, supplemental tax would be, tax would be taken to the voters.
I see, I see. I see, okay.
Right, unless they put limits on what could be in the supplemental education spending, if they said it can only be for you know, this, that and the other, then you're kinda, you're kinda in, um, you know, in some trouble.
The only way to save money in our system is to decrease staff, right? And I'm I'm saying staff is the large staff, right? So that means the governor's going after administrators, because us mean administrators make so much money, right? But if you make the five mega districts and cut central office staff, first of all, your central offices are gonna be ginormous with that many kids, so it's not that many people, right? And then, um, secondly, everybody's teacher's salary and all the other staff salaries are gonna increase, right? And there's way more of them than there are administrators that you're gonna cut. And so that cost, that cost will be a significant increase um to budgets to bring up salaries because like if we look at um the the Chittenden County, right, mega district there, there is no way that the teachers in South Burlington, who are our highest paid teachers in the state, are gonna do Franklin Northeast salaries, right? So you're gonna rate, you're gonna probably give South Burlington a little bump.
Makes sense.
In the negotiation process and that all of those salaries in every other district, current district that become one will need to match that, they'll have to have one. There's way more people there than there are central office administrators that you're gonna cut with five district plan. So just on that, that fact alone, the governor's plan does not save money, right? Because they're also saying, no, in no place in here am I talking about closing small schools, right? That's been stated multiple times by the governor and his team. Well, you have to, you you have to lower staff beyond central office employees in order to save money because that's where all the money comes, right? That's where all the, all of our budgets are, seventy-five to eighty percent salaries and benefits across the board. So you have to do something to reduce that number in order to save money in education.
I have a question about the um, the the sort of comparative document that you put together, MRPS compared to the funding model. And I know, I think you talked about this and I I didn't fully get it, I wasn't looking at this at the, at that moment. This Picas, what is Picas?
Yeah, so when the, when uh the agency's team was rolling out the governor's plan in a slow roll, they were basing a lot of work on a, on a plan, and I can link it in here so you can see it. Um, Picas is the last name of the Larry Picas, the guy who wrote the plan with somebody else, but it's just known as the Picas Report. Um, and there's some interesting testimony by Picas in a joint, I don't know if you guys saw this one, in a joint Ways and Means Finance, Senate Finance, House Ed, Senate Ed Committee, which I can find the date, where he said, I I didn't do Vermont numbers, I did general numbers and they took my general numbers and put it into Vermont context, which doesn't work, right?
Picas said that?
Yeah.
Picas said that.
So the Picas Report is based on a national look at what you, I think you asked this in a question, what they call evidence-based or adequate staffing. Um, and it's a national norm, so it, so it's not based on what the rules and statutes and expectations in Vermont are. So for instance, we by law have to have an effective MTSS model. Well, you need human resources to run an effective MTSS model, it's just a fact. Um, and so, but the 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 staffing has one interventionist, like I said earlier. That's not an effective MTSS model, you cannot run one with with one interventionist, so with four hundred fifty kids. The Picas Report is based on four hundred fifty kids, which they based, the governor's team based their staffing amounts on, which then fed into the foundation formula, the adequacy amount that they had at thirteen something, right? The interesting thing about that, though, is that if you look at Picas, his report is based on a student of four uh uh elementary school of four hundred fifty students. But the five district model isn't based on that, right? And and it's, and our schools across Vermont are based on that, right? Our UES school is barely there, but you get, you know, you get lower than two hundred ki- kids in a school dis- school building and you're, I think you're closing something like a hundred fifty school buildings in Vermont. So it's not based on the Vermont context at all, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, um, I was told by a high-level agency official that when she looked at UES staff at the Picas Report and UES staffing, that it matched, that we were in no trouble whatsoever, so I wanted to test that theory out um because I didn't believe that that was accurate. And um when I looked at all, so UES's four hundred students was just eighty-nine percent of what Picas is saying at forty-five, four hundred fifty students. So what's the difference there? And then my notes as to where things are funded and you can see that Union Elementary School is, you know, has a difference of forty-one staff members. Um, so there's, or I'm sorry, a difference of fifty staff, sorry, I was looping on the wrong one.
Well, what I'm, what I'm seeing, and this is what I'm thinking about in terms of sort of what we, what our values are or what what we may wanna add to the conversation generally is that for a a really, you know, hopefully fully functional MTSS model, we're looking at seven and a half interventionists for four hundred kids and twenty-four aides compared to one interventionist and two in this comparative model. And so, you know, if the, I mean, i- is that something that we as a board would would, you know, wanna advocate for? I mean, on the other hand, the cost, you know, the cost for kids in, I mean, I I always go back to the cost per pupil that would come out when it would compare UES to RBS. And RBS was quite expensive because of scale, but in the time that you've been our superintendent, the cost per pupil at Union has increased fairly dramatically for good reason. But, you know, probably not what the governor would think was, you know, the way, the way education should be funded. Um, so I I don't know exactly what I'm trying to say, but there's something in this compa- comparison that you have that shows me that like if we're advocating for something, we're advocating for something like our model to be funded at a statewide level.
So what I keep saying is that you don't achieve, and I said this with Act one twenty-seven too, so this isn't new, but you don't, you don't get to equity, which is what Brigham is asking us to do, right? By taking a system like ours that has evidence we have an effective model in place, right? And bringing it down to a level of a school district that is not adequately funded n- because their taxpayers don't fund it, right, don't vote to fund it. We we bring that school district up, right? And so when I testified to Senate Finance on this exact chart here, my argument was that, yeah, we probably have a couple places that we could look at for staffing, right? Like, we always have a Plan B and C in our budget proposals that we could probably serve, you know, we could do okay. It wouldn't affect our model that much, or we could look at some positions and things like that, but we're not overly staffed, right? We're not at all, we're not an elementary school that has a special ed director in it. And there's districts that have elementary schools and every school building has their own special education director, including a district-wide special education director, like, we're not that district. And so when you're looking at our staffing levels, I don't, well, I don't think we're overstaffed. I think there are a couple areas probably that we could do better in, but we're not overstaffed.
Well, and the, and that model, the one on the left doesn't include custodial or cafeteria or one other thing, so it's not like we would.
Special educators.
Yeah, special educators, it's not like we're gonna get rid of those positions just because the governor didn't think that they are necessary in a school. Cause they're very necessary in the school. But I think what I hear you saying, Rhett, is that to sort of maybe as an answer to what I was kind of putting out there, opening up the discussion, is that if we were going to be advocating for something, we would be advocating for the model that we use at our buildings.
Yeah, and I'm agreeing with you too, I I'm saying it a different way, but I was, I'm agreeing with you is that we have an effective model. Let's not tear our model down simply because of a money thing, let's build other models up so that they can match, you know, and there's, there's much higher needs in our district, so they're gonna have more, right? And that's probably where the weights come in.
I mean, kind of just say the obvious, but it seems pretty clear that the house bill is a much better deal for our district than by the state than the governor's bill.
Than the governor's plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds like it's.
Yeah, but we don't know what the senate's gonna do to that bill.
I'm like, yeah, I guess it stands now.
In the next one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But how do you define a second home?
I mean, should we, should we be reaching out to our senators, we have a pretty.
Massachusetts.
Yeah, we've, we have great relationships with our three senators.
Yeah. I don't think it would hurt, I think the the challenge for me is public perception right now, so will will people come with their pitchforks if the school board and school district under my leadership really get behind a bill that could potentially merge us with four other districts that people may not wanna merge with? Right, like, that's my, that's my concern around advocacy with this bill, I'm just being full-out honest that I've shared with the VSA.
We want you to be honest with us.
I will testify facts about our district all day long. Um, however, it's it's tricky for me to say, yeah, let's get behind a bill when I'm, I have no idea what our community thinks or feels about this bill.
Totally. Yeah.
Um, so that's, that's one of the, if I have to choose between the two, I'm choosing the house bill. But I I just have no idea what our community actually wants or thinks or needs. I know there are. I know there are needs in the state that I can get behind. I think consolidation is a good thing to a point, right? Let's follow the research. If we're going to do it, let's follow the research. Um, and I think there are schools that need to be closed because they're small by choice, right? Not by necessity. Um, and I define necessity by distance and geographic isolation more than anything else, right? And there are schools in Vermont that are like that. That's just a fact and reality. So, um, I think there is work to be done. I just don't know if we want to get behind a bill that our community doesn't support.
Yeah, I'm not saying that's a get behind a bill, that, you know, this body should take it, but I mean, I also think there's a reality that, that, that we're not on an island and that the, the current formula is, as you pointed out, is unsustainable. And if, you know, if there's not a solution that works for the state and it gets the state to a sustainable point, even if we have to give up a few things to get there, we're eventually going to lose those anyways if an unsustainable system goes forward and we just have, you know, the pressures of that exerted on us year after year. So I, I think we have to be honest with the community that what might not be the best for us next year, but is good for the state and makes the state sustainable, is going to be good for us long term because we can't, we're not on an island and we can't be on an island.
I don't think there's a huge amount of time pressure. Um, I think whatever does get passed out, there will be something passed out this year, but it'll be kind of loose. Um, and then this Commission on Future of Public Education is probably going to be the one to design the districts.
Yeah.
And present them. And then presumably in twenty twenty-six, the legislature would vote on them, but that's an election year. A senator told me in the hallway that he.
Yeah, he's not lying. Point, it's the reality.
He thought, he didn't think there would, that would happen. So that would be twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah.
So I think this might be pretty drawn out. Um, you know.
Of course, that's when we'll hear public opinion. Once people see a map, I think that's when we will hear from people.
Well, a map that's in legislation, because there's certainly been maps that have been shared.
Something that looks like it's gonna be voted on as, as the thing, you know?
You had mentioned in an email already that it might be a good idea to have a community forum or several with, with our community to, at least, to do, go beyond just, you know, the, the people who watch on Orca getting caught up on all of this. And, and as Jim was saying, you know, helping everybody understand we're not on an island. And so, and we have, we're, there, we may have to make some difficult choices.
Mm-hmm.
And that.
Communities are doing that with their legislatures and it's very interesting.
Oh, yeah, okay. Don't worry.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I, I, I get worried that we, um, I want to make sure that our superintendent can still do the super quiet, peaceful mom challenging day job that we already have. So I just, I worry about us as a school board or our superintendent, you know, sort of setting an expectation that we're hosting forums and things like that. I think that is the responsibility of our lawmakers and we can certainly participate, but I just, I don't want to add more physical like work and time onto us and our superintendent to like host that level of conversation with the community because this is not our proposal. I think the lawmaker should. I just don't want to make a lot of work. I feel like you've already gone above and beyond in what you presented today. I think it was really helpful and we should definitely continue to be like actively interested in this. But there are, there are years of study committees and advisory boards and things like that spelled out. And I just, I don't want it to become Libby's full-time job to like host community forums about the legislature's plans personally.
I, I don't want it to become your full-time job either. I do, I will push back a little in that I do think part of our role and it is is community engagement and the like soft, um, skills of helping, like, hea- hearing from people and also sharing information. Um, so I wouldn't say we have to go overboard, but I don't, I don't think we leave this just up to the legislature. I think because it's going to be us who are in the end having the conversations with our neighboring districts and caregivers in our district are, you know, it's like, it's like you were just saying, our students will eventually be going to school and be in community with other, with people they have not before. And so maybe it's not, you know, this spring that we need to start those kinds of, that kind of work, but I think there is going to need to be, in addition to the, whatever is handed down to the legislature, the like on-the-ground grassrootsy, and I'm not talking about advocacy. I'm just talking about like, who, who are we? Like what, what values do we share? What do we, I, I don't know, like something that will, um, uh, smooth the path for when it actually happens. You know, we've had a lot of rocky history when it comes to merging and unmerging. And the more that we can do, the people who are sort of like stewards of that history, the more that we can do to make it, to move the boulders out of the way and make it a, you know, a smoother path, I think, is a good thing.
Me, I totally agree with what you're saying, but the thing that, that I'm getting stuck with right now is that it, we're not anywhere near what it is yet.
Sure.
And I think it's really hard to engage in that type of discussion.
Yeah.
Without knowing what it is.
Yeah.
I think we really want to pay attention to the, it will go to committee, back to committee, right? And we really want to pay attention to that because, um, we have one of the most powerful senators in Ann Cummings, who is Senate Finance Chair in our midst, right? I've got her on my cell phone like there, and probably all, many of you do as well. So I think that, that is a place that could have a little bit more of an immediate impact or might need more of an immediate impact.
Mm-hmm. Well, and we do have, um, the work that we're going to do hopefully with Wash Central on that feasibility study, which is a little bit what I'm talking about. Like let's at least start to understand what it could look like as a bigger community.
I would feel comfortable talking about that when it's out because it's our thing and we can speak to it.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Um, and you, but the, the legislative stuff is just so vague right now and we won't be solid enough to talk about for a while.
Okay.
Yeah, no, and I, and I think giving like examples to legislature of what larger districts could look like successfully is all, you know, and if we can do that with the feasibility study, because I think you're right, it is going to take a few years and show them what a three to five thousand district could look like, how it could come together, how it could work, is better than sitting around and waiting for them to figure something out and freaking out about it.
Yeah, yeah. I, I do agree totally too that we should, we should, and I do think we sort of are starting to get an idea, but as this evolves, what are sort of our communities, I don't want to say non-negotiables, but like I think the MTSS is a great example. Like let's, let's, let's come to the table with facts. And if our fact is, like our data is showing that our model, which requires this level of resources, is helping, like those are things we can, like we feel strongly and want to advocate for like what, what is working. Um, and like where, so yeah, I think that's a great example. Like what are some other things our community feels really strongly that like we, when our, when, when, when we are faced with this, we're not starting from scratch. Like we'll have a feasibility study, we have some like good examples of those. We have really good data. Like I totally do agree with that. Like we should kind of have a temperature of our district as it is now so that when we are inevitably paired up or whatever, we kind of know where we're all at. So we can advocate on that, on that community's back.
Absolutely. All right. Knowing that this is a continuing conversation, does anyone have final thoughts for tonight?
I, I kind of kept quiet because I, you know, you're all brilliant and I didn't have anything to contribute. But I, I do think that you can't understate the impact of the healthcare. It still sometimes feels like we're moving deck chairs around a little bit.
Yes.
Um, and on, I think it was NPR the other day, there were a couple of superintendents, um, one of whom had sixteen boards.
Yes.
Elaine Collins.
Elaine up in North Country.
Not sixteen board members, sixteen boards.
That's all she does.
And, um.
And she's wonderful. She's a phenomenal superintendent.
And I, I can't remember if it was her or if it was Brooke, the other superintendent, but like they were also talking about like, they were one of the communities that, whose budget, like they're one of the ones that hopefully would benefit from a foundation formula because their community is not willing to vote the budget that they needed to provide what they, you know, proposed their community is what they needed to provide to their students. So I think that is one of the objectives, right, is to like bring some equity to those districts that because of property tax pressures and because of the sort of micro local decisions, there are students that are currently not getting what they do need, right? So we may not be one of those communities and we can say, you know, here's what our data is showing us. But I look at Montpelier-Roxbury and we've already made really painful decisions. We are a unified, you know, one board, one superintendent. I think we're kind of lean and mean. I don't think we operate with a lot of flow. So I don't know where else I would go under this. And it is really painful to say, um, to know that, sort of like with groceries right now. It's like, oh, I think I'm saving money on dog food, but then my groceries are still X amount. In other words, health and, health, if healthcare is not in some way addressed, it's just going to continue to sort of strangle the actual education provisions for students without impact, without it being about outcomes or students at all. So I, I, I haven't really noticed that, I, I know people talk about it and say healthcare, healthcare, healthcare and housing, 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 but.
But it's not in the legislation.
There's not like an easy answer for that. And so I, I'm worried we could go through some pretty major machinations with education governance and until we've like addressed those things, I'm not sure it's going to provide some magic.
Savings.
Hundred percent savings.
Yeah.
You're one hundred percent correct.
I, I, I do want to recall that as a board, we supported Act one twenty-seven.
Mm-hmm.
And publicly and to the whomever we sent our letters to or whatever. And the consequences of that were pretty devastating for some members of our community. So I, I only say that because, um, not sit, having us taking a stand on something, I think is not what we did in the past. You know, that's not what we did in the past. We didn't just say nothing. We, we supported increased equity, changed weights. That changed our situation pretty dramatically. You know, and I, and I have a, I have a, I really hope that there are, if there are small schools that need to be closed, that there are rules and requirements so that it's coming from law and not coming the way it happened for us.
And I testified on that very, that last statement right there. That if, if there are closures, then there has to be support for communities who experience it in terms of building, in terms of like how you rebuild or how you, how you keep that connection. Like there needs to be state resources dedicated to that piece. Um, and there needs to be a logical process to follow.
Appreciate the conversation. Thanks for.
Yeah. Thanks again, Libby.
Yep. Send me questions my way.
All right. So we are then moving on to policy monitoring. Um, we have three here. C twenty-nine, the diversity, equity and inclusion policy. F one, the travel reimbursement policy. And C twenty-eight, transgender and non-conforming students policy.
Quite the trio.
Mm-hmm. It's a real through line there. Uh, is there a motion to approve?
I'm briefly accept the policy monitoring reports.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay. Any discussion or questions about them? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Did you miss another?
Oh, did I miss another? Oh, I'm so sorry. The policy reading. Thank you very much, Tim. Policy E one, uh, we're doing the second reading and I'll kick it over to Jill.
Yeah, so we, as, um, Libby has shared this with and hosted conversations with the various caregiver groups. We've had our first and second reading. The policy committee reviewed some of the questions and had some further questions from like the administrators and like community, the caregiver councils, um, which Libby has responded to. So we do have, um, an evolving draft that we can come back with that would be reflective of all of those pieces. I think this might actually have quite a bit of it. I don't know if you, I don't know which version this is, but, um, uh, there are, we're getting to the point where we can actually provide sort of our final, uh, report to legal to get just the final review and make sure we're not undoing something we couldn't undo. But, um, generally very minor things, right? Like the reference of parent versus caregiver versus family. Um, there are, there were a lot of good conversations in the comments and questions that might be really good things to think about, but may not be like a policy thing. Might just be like good information to have or good examples, but maybe doesn't have to be written into a policy. Um, and just as a reminder for folks, this was, um, this is a, you know, prescribed policy regarding specifically parent and family engagement under Title One, Part A. And so how can we ensure that there's genuine engagement and communication and dialogue between, um, the district and parents and caregivers and students here? So this is a required policy. So we will, um, I think maybe what we could do, I'm still a little new to the policy chair, but maybe we could go through the whole thing when we have like a final to really walk through with everybody and answer any final questions before we do a final, final reading. Just to walk the board through it, make sure everyone answer any questions anyone has.
Because there will be a third reading and then a vote at the following meeting. Is that our process?
Yeah, sometimes we just do third reading, but, um.
I think this one deserves a third reading.
Yeah.
And, um, then it becomes, uh, Anna warns it as a policy adoption.
Mm-hmm. Right. And an agenda item that is a policy. Okay. So right now it's just there as take a look at it and know that the policy committee is still doing a little bit of work. I heard you say.
Yeah, I agree also. Okay. Yeah, it looked like you got through all of our questions. If you do see any things that you have questions about, feel free to email me and we can add it into the Google Doc. But.
Okay.
It's gotten pretty well vetted through a lot of good eyes.
Okay. But no, um, vote tonight. Nothing we need to vote on for this?
No, I don't think we should. We have some questions and answers going back and forth over the Google Doc.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks for catching that, Tim. Now, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some would.
All right. Thanks, Scott. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.